Good evening and welcome to the Portishead Town Council Annual Meeting. At the annual meeting, we have to do the election of chairman and vice chair of the council, and a lot of other business, so those will be the first things on the agenda. If any of you were here a couple of weeks ago, it might feel like Groundhog Day, but here we go. The first item on the agenda is to elect the chairman of the council for the 2024/25 municipal year. So do I have any proposals for the position of chairman of the council?
Sorry Roger.
Speak.
Hi, yeah, it's on. Yeah, I propose Roger Whitfield, please.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody else who wishes to propose somebody else for chair? And do we have a second up for that, please?
Yes, Roger, I'm very happy to second a proposal.
Okay, thank you. Emma, would you like to speak to the proposal?
Yeah, indeed. So again, sort of following on from the meeting that we had, that I wasn't actually able to attend a couple of weeks ago due to prior commitments. I think we've all established that we needed to move swiftly into sort of nominating somebody for this role to be able to serve Portishead. And we've listened really, I guess, intently to all of the debate and all of the views of all of the rest of the councillors as well. I think we acknowledge, given your position at North Somerset Council, it could become challenging, but we believe from what you've said and we believe from, you know, knowing you as a person as well, that you will do your utmost to uphold the position as town council chair, along with your position in North Somerset, and at the same time provide us with that continuity and support for Portishead directly at the executive level. So that's, that's, that's my opinion anyway in terms of.
Okay, thank you very much. John, did you wish to speak?
Yeah, I would broadly second your statements. I would add that I regard Roger, you as a gentleman of wide experience in the local authority field. I think that your inside knowledge of the machinations within North Somerset Council could be valuable. And I think that you are well placed to represent the town's interests to the council.
Thank you very much. Do we need to move to votes on that now as there's nobody else? Then what, do I have to declare myself chair? And is there a declaration for me to sign? We'll do that now? Did I have to speak the declaration? Still a lot heavier now. Did I need to, sorry, did I need to say the declaration out loud? I, Roger Whitfield, having been elected to the office of chairman of Portishead Town Council, declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. So I'd just like to thank the officers for their help and assistance in getting this meeting going and doing all the paperwork. And I'd like to thank my fellow councillors for their support in me. It says on here that there needs to be a vote of thanks to the retiring chairman. But of course, that would be me, so that makes no sense. However, I'd like to maybe propose that we do a vote of thanks to the chairman that retired just a couple of weeks ago, Ben Aldridge, who did a fantastic job on this council and in the community. So could I, could I propose a vote of thanks to Ben Aldridge? All those in favour? Oh, was that online? Okay, that's fine. So there's a, there's a, this is going to be really brief, this one. There's a chairman's review. And I guess that's my review of the last two weeks of being chair of this council, in which I was what, present at that meeting and I've just started this one. So I don't think there's a great deal to say about that. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna do my best to, to be the chairman of this council that everyone would like me to be. And so shall we move on to the election of the vice chairman? I would like to propose Mike Johnston. Do I have a second up? Okay, yeah, choose your second up, I guess. Sorry, Tim, did you want to talk? Was that another, there was another second, yeah? There we go. So we've got a proposer, me and a second up, Janet. Okay, that's great. So we've got that, that one on the record. Um, okay, so I'd, I'd like to say that Mike Johnston's been on this council a number of years ago. He's been, he's been a chair and vice chair, I think, of the council. His name's on the board at the end. I think he brings quite a lot to this job and I think he's a very good councillor and a very trustworthy person. And I think he will fulfil the job well. Janet, would you like to say anything? A second up?
Just that I.
Mic, microphone, please, Janet.
I totally agree with you. I also am extremely pleased that we have people who have been representing the, our high street and our community for so long in the positions of, of chair and vice chair, because I think that that is probably the most important area of our town.
Thank you, Janet. Do I have any other proposals for anybody else to be vice chair? Again, no votes? Yep, so no need for a vote as there's nobody else. So there's a declaration for mine to sign.
Thank you. I'm Michael Johnston, having been elected to the office of vice chairman of Portishead Town Council, declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much for entrusting me to this position and I will hopefully get along and serve you well as your vice chairman and step in where necessary at various events in your absence if you are unable to attend. So yeah, thank you. I hope the next year goes well for us all. And I know it will.
Right, so with that out of the way, the next item is declaration of councillors' interests and requests for dispensations. Does anybody have any interests that they wish to declare? No? Okay, I'm moving on. Apologies for absence. Do we have any apologies for absence in this meeting? No? Okay, that's great. So the, the next item on the agenda is to consider the appointment of members to committees and advisory groups and appointments of chairman and vice chairman. So should we start with the planning advisory group? Sorry, do you say we had to do these chairs and vice chairs one at a time? So just. So I'll just read out the membership for each one and then do the chair and vice chairs out there, yeah? Okay. In which case, let's start at the top of my list with the Community Matters Committee, where we have Emma Blackmore, Jenny Eastman, Bob Cartwright, Martin Dowling, Janet Davy and David Gunnell. So we do need a proposer and second up for those to be the members. Okay, do we have a proposer? And a second up? So Janet and Tim? We need a vote? Yes, so all those in, all those in favour of those people being on the Community Matters Committee? Okay. Sorry, Geoff? Geoff Hardman has asked if I could read the names again. That's fine. So that is Emma Blackmore, Jenny Eastman, Bob Cartwright, Martin Dowling, Janet Davy and David Gunnell. They will all be in the minutes after the meeting as well. Okay, and we'll use the same format all the way through then. Okay. Okay, so do we have a proposer for chairman of Community Matters? To Janet, I think you got your hand up first?
Emma.
Emma Blackmore. And a second up? Martin, was it? It's a race tonight. That's fine. And you want me to do vice chair at the same time? No. Yeah, so any, anybody else? No. In which case, all those in favour of Emma Blackmore being the chairman of Community Matters? Okay, that's passed. And do I have a proposer for a vice chair? Emma? Microphone.
Sorry, I'm proposing David, please.
So if we don't use the microphones, the people online can hear us.
Yeah, no, indeed. Sorry.
So you're proposing David Gunnell. Do I have a second up for David Gunnell? There we go. I think Jenny was the first one in there. Okay, anybody else? All those in favour? Then that's carried. So that's the Community Matters Committee. Done for the following year. So Planning Advisory Group. Members on this group are supposed to be Mike Johnston, Martin Dowling, Emma Blackmore, Robert Cartwright, Tim Snaden and Roger Whitfield. So could I have a proposer for those people being on the Planning Advisory Committee? That's David Gunnell and the second up, Emma. Oh, so was that, yeah, okay, Emma. The second up, all those in favour? That's carried. Do I have a proposal for the chairman of the Planning Advisory Committee? Was that David?
Mike Johnson.
Thank you. It's Mike Johnson. Do I have a second up? Is it Bob Cartwright? Anybody else? All those in favour? That's carried. Are we okay there? Okay, so the clerks just reminded me that we would normally have eight people on this committee. There is, I know an issue that we are two councillors short at the moment. And, and we were hoping to resolve that when we got the councillors. Can we put somebody in temporarily until then if they want to? We can change them later, can't we? Yeah. So would anybody like to, to stand in for that for the time being?
Yeah, I'll stand in for the time being.
Two, three, four, five, six. So that's still only seven, isn't it? Anybody, anybody else want to stand in for the time being? John?
Thank you.
So where did we get to? Okay, do we need to revote for the, for the committee with the extra members on there? So, so the committee, as we voted just now, but now with Jenny and John on there. All those in favour? Thank you. And do I have a proposer for vice chair?
Martin.
Mike Johnston is proposing Martin Dowling. Do I have a second up? Emma? Yeah, that's fine. Anybody else? All those in favour? Staffing and Finance Committee. Members, we are, we have proposed John Davy, David Gunnell, Bob Cartwright, Mike Johnston and Jenny Eastman. Are we okay for numbers on that one? Okay, that's great. Do I have a proposer for that? David Gunnell and a second up? John Davy. All those in favour? That's carried. Do we need to go through the staffing subcommittee at the same time? Okay, and then we come back to the subcommittee, yeah? Okay, that's fine. So do I have a proposal for chairman of Staffing and Finance Committee? Emma, Mike?
Yeah, sorry, I proposed John. He's done a sterling job on the finances. So yeah.
Okay, you're proposing John Davy. Do I have a second up for that? There's Bob Cartwright. Anybody else? All those in favour? That's carried. And do I now have a proposal for a vice chairman for Staffing and Finance?
I would like to propose David.
David Gunnell. Yep. Okay, do I have a second up for that? Jenny, thank you. Anybody else? All those in favour? Carried. Staffing Subcommittee. We have David Gunnell, Jenny Eastman and Mike Johnston. It says Staffing Subcommittee on my list. I just, I just read my list. Is it a working group? So. So shall we, shall we change the wording and call it a working group? Yeah, okay. That, that's probably a typo from the sheet. So Staffing Working Group, David Gunnell, Jenny Eastman, Mike Johnston. Do we have a proposer for that? Yep, thank you. And a second up? I think we've got that. All those in favour? That's carried. Done the council. Am I okay to proceed with my list of Grants Working Party? Or would you prefer me to, go somewhere else first?
It's Agenda Item 10, that's.
Okay, that's fine. So we're on Agenda Item 10. And the first one's the Grants Working Party. We have proposed for this David Gunnell, Emma Blackmore, Mike Johnston, Jenny Eastman and John Davy. Do I have a proposer for that? Yep, and a second up? Did someone grab a second up there? Okay, all those in, in favour? The next one is the Cost of Living Fund Working Party. On that, we have David Gunnell, Janet Davy and Emma Blackmore. Do we have a proposer for that? Yeah, Bob, was it? Disbear with me a second, Geoff, and a second up? Jenny? All those in favour? Sorry, Geoff, did you have something to say? Do we need a fourth one? Okay, so we will nominate the clerk to be the fourth person on that one. As you know, we are short a couple of councillors, so there are some gaps in here at the moment. Do we need to revote that one then with the clerk on there? So. All those in favour? That's carried. Project Working Group. We, that's not on my list unless it, unless it's the Halls Working Group.
Oh yeah, so yes, yes, I'm one of them. Who else was there?
So yeah, it's not, it's not on the list that we've got here. So Project Working Group, three councillors. Do we have any councillors who would like to be on that group? So Emma?
Name?
And Mike. Is that yours as well, Tim? Okay, all those in favour? That's carried. Climate Working Group.
Bit of a new one, this one. It's felt that it's a requirement really, that we need to be pushing this agenda forward. So it's proposed that we'll step up a gear and withstand at the flower show to promote this a bit, amongst other things. So yeah, anyone wish to join it?
So Bob Cartwright, Jenny Eastman, David Gunnell?
The more the merrier, really. It's affecting us all, isn't it?
And Martin? Any more? We're at it?
Yes.
And Mike. I wish I had five on there now, yeah. That's correct. All those in favour? That's carried. Parish Engagement Working Group. Again, I'm not sure we have that on our list, did we?
It's just got councillors here, so I'm assuming it's been added on.
Let me just check with the clerk and see what the Parish Engagement Working Group is. Sorry, microphone, Emma.
Sorry, again. Yeah, so it's that the Parish Engagement Working Group is the retitled Engagement and Participation Working Group. So yeah, it's the home, really the engagement element of it, so that it's the renamed element of that.
Right with you.
So then, and as it stood, it was myself, Roger yourself and Bob.
So we have this down as the Public Participation Engagement Working Group in our, in our list, don't we? Okay, and currently we have Roger Whitfield, Emma Blackmore and Bob Cartwright. Emma, are you looking for any more or are you happy where you stand at the moment with that one?
Absolutely more than merrier, to, to be honest, so yeah.
Okay, so Bob Cartwright?
Yeah, obviously it's been going a couple of months now. And I was under the understanding that we were sort of like enticing the clerk to join in with us at some stage.
Yeah, that's fine. I think, yeah, I think we, we start, we started this as a type group, didn't we? Just to, to make sure that we, we, we knew what we, what our remit was. But now might be a, a good time to ask if anybody else would like to join that group. And obviously we want to, we're going to want to bring officers in at some stage as well. So Janet, would, would you like to join that group? And Tim? Okay, that's fine. Any more? We need a proposer for that, so I'll propose that. A second up, Bob Cartwright with the fast hand. All those in favour? That's carried. And HR Staffing Review Working Group. Oh, I did that as the, as the Subcommittee Stroke Working Group, so that one's already been dealt with. Wonderful. Subscriptions to Other Bodies, Agenda Item 11. Am I just reading these out?
Roger, can I come in there before you move on to the next?
Sorry, yes, John.
I believe we should have the Halls repairs looking in that list as well.
Yeah, it's, it's on my list, but it's not on the agenda. So I can add to the agenda with the Halls Working Group, which was down at the bottom of my list somewhere. So on the Halls Working Group, I have Wendy Stroke Sharon, John Davy, Mike McDonald, Mike Johnston and Roger Whitfield. Sorry, Jenny, did you want to?
Jenny is a member of the group, as it stands at the moment.
Okay, you want to remain a member? So Jenny Eastman as well? We've just turned your mic off. Go on, do it again.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Jenny. Okay, anybody else? We need, we need a proposer and second up for that? Yep, so do I have a proposer? And a second up? All those in favour? That's carried. Are we okay to move on to Item 11 now? Great. Subscription, I think this will be, checkmate, hang on. Subscriptions to other bodies to confirm that the town council subscribes to the following bodies. Avon Wildlife Trust, Friends of Western Bigwood, £5 per calendar month. NALC, which is the National Association of Local Councils, Avon Local Council Administration, £3,081.91 per annum. Open Spaces Society, £45 per annum. Society of Local Clerks, Clerk and Deputy Clerk, £682 per annum. South West Councils, £499 per annum. CPRE, do we have, do we have the actual words for that one?
Council for the Protection of Rural England.
Thank you very much, Jenny. The Countryside Charity, thirty-six pounds per annum. Seven Net Limited. One hundred and fifty pounds to be confirmed, it says here. So it is now confirmed, so one hundred and fifty pounds. Parish Councils Airport Association, ninety-five pounds per annum. Seven Estrie Vision, it's free of charge, although we subscribe to it, it doesn't cost us anything. Chamber of Commerce, forty-five pounds. Is that? That's the disbanded, what is said, Chamber of Trade and Commerce, isn't it? So I think we can probably strike that one from the list in that case. And is ICO Information Commissioners Office, so Information Commissioners Office, forty-five pounds per annum. Sorry, David. Mike, sorry, microphone, David.
Before we vote for this list, I think we agreed to find out a little bit more about Parish Councils Airport Association. I'd understood they'd formed around the time of the airport expansion concerns. And I wasn't sure when I was signing off our subscriptions to that, whether it was still value for money for us, it was obviously not very much money. But what the benefits were to the town council for being a member of that.
Okay, let me just check. Can we, can we strike this and push it back to Community Matters to investigate? Unless you have an answer now. No, so let's take that one off the list. Push it back onto the Community Matters agenda for them. I'm assuming Community Matters is the most obvious place for it. Back onto the agenda for them to investigate what it is and then report back to the council and then we'll make a decision as to whether or not to continue with it. Okay, that's fine. Yes.
Which was that Paul Churchill was representative and I believe that the next physical meeting is in June. Because I think they have about four meetings a year, but I think the other three are online. But it could be that one of us goes as a representative to that meeting in June.
Yes, no, yes, no, I think I'm booked in to do that one.
Yeah.
That particular one, so I will do.
Meeting in Feltham Village Hall, isn't it? So we might be in to then come back with some more information and speak back to that.
Okay, Bob, did you have, Bob, did you have something to add to that for us? Yeah, sorry, Bob, if it's going to take a few words, can you just come and speak into the mic for the people online?
Yeah, only because I went there. It's a biannual formal meeting, I believe, that they have to do. Because of the sort of area that is affected by sound, all the parishes go. They explain what they're going to do, what their developments are. It did heighten when the expansion was talked about. And we got more meetings, but basically we used to go twice a year to hear what they're doing. And if we wanted to raise issues of sound or any other problems, traffic or whatever, that was where they accepted those comments. So that's what happened at the two meetings per year we used to go to.
Give me a second, Bob, because I think David wants to maybe come in there.
I was just going to ask, I wonder why we have to pay for that privilege, you know, why do we have to pay to go?
I didn't think we did.
Okay, so we'll.
Check the money if nothing else.
We'll push that one back through Community Matters, find out why we're paying for it and what, if anything, we're getting for that money.
Well, it could be just a simple matter of paying for the village hall to be hired for one or two meetings a year, yeah.
So we'll get that one sorted anyway. So if we take that one off the list and the recommendation is to approve the annual subscriptions as detailed with the exclusion of the Parish Council Airport Association. Do I need a proposer? Do I have a proposer for that one? David Gunall and a seconder? Martin? All those in favour? That's carried. Okay, item number 12. Appoint councillors in representative roles. To review appointments to representative roles as follows. So we'll go through these one at a time and then vote at the end. Citizens of Vice North Somerset. Do we know, is this on my? Just got to find it now because I'm out of order. Citizens of Vice North Somerset, I have Janet Davy and Alan George. Do I have a proposer for that? Yeah, no, that makes sense, doesn't it? Okay, that's it. Otherwise, we're going to be here all night and everyone's going to be asleep. You're right. Okay, so the next one is Gertie Gales and North West Allotments. Now, we had a little bit of discussion about this, didn't we? As to whether or not to make that Gertie Gales and North West Allotments and Beach Hill Allotments. So I think we're probably just going to put more in as one. Currently, we only have one representative on that and that's Jenny Eastman. I don't think there was anybody else wanted to come forward and we were going to hold those over for maybe a new councillor when that happened. Sorry, Emma, did you want to?
Yeah, I only wanted to say sorry, Beach Hill is going to be added to the agenda and I just need to declare I've got an allotment there, that's all.
Okay, that's fine. And I'm assuming that you're going to abstain from voting on that one would make sense, yeah? Oh no, you can't, can you? You have to abstain from voting on the whole list because it's in the list, isn't it? Shall we, we'll take that one, shall we take that one now then? So I need a proposer? David and a seconder? Tim, all those in favour? That's carried, thank you, if we could note the abstention. Nelson and District Community Transport. I have Martin Dowling down on that one. It says one plus one substitute. I don't know if we have anybody to be a substitute on that one. Emma? Okay, so Emma will be substitute on that one. That's great. North Somerset Water Safety and Coastal Advisory Group. I've got David Gunall and Mike Johnston on that. Parish Wolf Winter Boat Storage, I believe that's Alan George. Again, we don't have a substitute on that one, but I think some of these were being left open for new councillors to come in. Fair Trade Portishead, I've got Martin Dowling. Lake Grounds Management Committee. I have Janet Davy, Mike Johnston, David Gunall, Tim Snaden and Martin Dowling. That's good because it only says two representatives here. So we're doing well on that one. Single Use Plastic Free Community Steering Group. Martin Dowling. Tourism and Heritage Lead, I have, sorry Janet, did you want to speak?
With the Tourism and Heritage Lead one, it was supposed to be me, Martin Dowling and Mike because of the history side of it as well, the heritage bit.
Yeah.
So is that what you've got there?
I have Janet Davy, Mike Johnston and Martin Dowling, yes.
Because it says one and one, so.
Yes, it says one rep plus one substitute, but I'm sure it'll be fine for you all to be there. Twinning Association, I have Janet Davy.
That really is all that's needed on that. We don't need a substitute as well.
Okay, that's fine. Now, Wellbeing Lead Local Partnerships and Wellbeing Lead Wider Partnerships. We decided to combine these two into one. So it's now Wellbeing Lead Local Partnerships and Wider Partnerships. And I have Janet Davy, Emma Blackmore and David Gunall. The next one's Youth Centre Representatives. And I'm not sure, that's not on the list. Of ones that we have, is it on my?
Yeah, for continuity purposes, it will remain being myself and John.
Just found it further down the page. So it's Emma Blackmore and John Davy. We've got Brackenwood next. And the thing, football clubs further down moments of things. Now, Brackenwood. Did we merge that with something else? So Brackenwood and Slade Road. And so do you have, that is Roger Whitfield, Tim Snaden and Janet Davy. Excellent. Southernet Business? That's a very good question. I think everybody should be asking at this stage, what is that? Sharon.
It's a group and they oversee what goes on over in Avonmouth and all the surrounding areas with all the links, et cetera. So it involves like the docks, Avonmouth, and we do have some involvement with them.
Okay, so we do. Sorry, Bob, was that?
Yeah, I wonder who that's going to be. Obviously, I work there, so it would seem to be obviously be mine.
Bob, that sounded very much like you volunteered for that one. Thank you, Bob Cartwright. Anybody else?
Yes, I can willingly join you, that's all right.
And Mike Johnston, there we go, Johnston. Excuse my lisp. We haven't done the football club yet. Yeah, Parish Councils Airport Association is the next one on my list.
But Martin's going to be on.
So Martin Dowling is going to be on the Parish Council Airport Association if we decide to renew our subscription, yes? Or pay the fee, whatever it is. WASP Skate Park? Wheels Park? Again, that's not on my list here. Do we just need one person for that? Yeah, so we need a minimum of one person. Do I have any volunteers for that?
You're all, David.
That sounded very much like a press gang rather than a volunteer. So do we have any volunteers for that? Tim's volunteering. Did you want to join him, David?
Just like to know a little bit more about what it is. Well, obviously I know what it is, but what's the role? Perhaps they're going to miss you.
I don't, does anybody, unfortunately, the person who was on that one is no longer a part of the council, so sometimes you lose a little bit of data when people leave. So I think the answer is we're probably not sure. And it's probably a case of going along to a meeting, finding out and then reporting back. So if Tim wants to do that, that's fine and then we can work it out now, that's okay. Janet, did you want to say something? You looked eager. No, that's okay. Then moving on, Polloso Town Football Club, which I believe is myself, Roger Whitfield. And just me, is it at the moment? Yep. And North Somerset Cycle Forum, is that you, Mike?
It's me.
So that's Mike Johnston on that one. Just to guess that one, Mike. So. Having gone through the list, do we now please have a proposer for that list? So who got there first? Can anyone say? I've got the glasses on. Okay, and a seconder? All those in favour? That's carried. Do I have to read all these out? So the next one, item 13, Town Council Meeting 2024-25. This is a schedule of meetings for the council for 2024-25. I believe that everybody in the room has one that's in the agenda pack. Is it customary to read it? Please, Clark?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just a slight amendment, having spoken with the Chair of Community Matters. All the Community Matters meetings are going to be moved from Thursdays to Wednesdays. So it's just the preceding Wednesday. So all of those dates will be changed or by the May one. So I will reissue all the meeting dates for everybody, but it's just that small change.
So do we want to recommend approval as published with that one change?
Yes, please.
Okay. So do we have a, so recommendation that the council approves the schedule of town council meetings? Marked ATC May 2024, agenda item 13 with the proviso that the Community Matters meeting is moved to the preceding Wednesday?
That's right. So instead of the Thursdays, it'll be on the Wednesdays apart from the 30th of May, which will continue on Thursday.
Perfect. Do I need a proposer and seconder for that? Could I have a proposer? Bob Cartwright, could I have a seconder? Janet Davy, all those in favour? Thank you very much, that's carried. Item 14. Check Signatories and Online Banking Authority. To confirm the current check signatories for online banking as well as cheque signing, councillors Emma Blackmore, John Davy and David Gunall. And two to appoint further cheque signatories. So I think we're looking to agree and approve five members with authority for online banking as well as cheque signing. Okay, so the clerk has informed me that it's normal that the Chair and Vice Chair are signatories, so. Are you, are you happy?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're both happy to be signatories. Do we have, before I ask if we have anybody else, I can just see, so I'm going to put my glasses on to see that far. Geoff Pardman, did you have a question? Could you use the mic, Geoff, so that people online can hear, sorry?
On the names of the people who have signatories, can you amend it to include their full names because you've got two Jade Davys on the council?
Yes, no, good point there, thank you. Clark, did we have that amended? Thank you very much, Geoff. Okay, do we have anybody else who would like to volunteer to be a cheque signatory for the council? Are we happy with just five? Okay, so the recommendation is to agree and approve five members being Emma Blackmore, John Davy, David Gunall, Mike Johnston and Roger Whitfield with authority for online banking as well as cheque signing. Do I have a proposer? Did you get that? And the seconder? All those in favour? That's carried. Item 15, Council Policies and Procedures. To review the council's policies and procedures. 15.1 Standing Orders amended January 2022, no changes required. 15.2 Financial Regulations amended March 2022, no changes required. Recommendation to approve standing orders and financial regulations with no alterations. Do I have a proposer? Sorry, do I have somebody, Mike would like to speak?
Yes, I would. I raised the matter some months ago in the Community Matters meeting in relation to the members of the council, councillors who were sitting, who weren't members of the committee, having to leave the room when it was a confidential matter being discussed. And the standing orders were going to get amended, subject to approval. And I'm just concerned that if we approve now, then they're not going to be amended until this time next year. So could I just have some clarification on that matter because it never actually got onto the agenda, did it, for that alteration to be made? got onto the agenda, did it, for that alteration to be made? Or to, or to be discussed, to be made?
That's absolutely fine. We can defer the standing orders. What I'll do, um, I can put those to Staffing and Finance Committee, um, towards the end of this month for a change. Um, and then that can be agreed at the full council meeting in June.
Thank you.
Can we, can we accept, can we accept them as they are and then change later?
You, you can change your standing orders at any time. It's just a formal thing that's done each annual meeting. But if there's changes that need to be done, then we'll defer it.
Okay, so we will defer item fifteen pending investigation through the
There's only fifteen one.
Standing, standing orders fifteen one, um, pending investigations through the committee. So recommendation is therefore to approve the financial regulations, fifteen two, as they are with no changes. Do I have a proposer? And a second there? All those in favour? Carried. Item sixteen, authorisation of the town clerk. Uh, to authorize the town clerk to sign in and in his or her absence, the deputy clerk or where appropriate to have sealed on behalf of the town council any orders, deeds or documents necessary to give effect to any matters contained in the reports received at this meeting or in any future resolution passed by the council. Okay, so this is just a, a standard thing we do. Anybody want to speak about this? So the recommendation is to authorize the town clerk to sign and in his or her absence, the deputy clerk or where appropriate to have sealed on behalf of the town council any orders, deeds or documents necessary to give effect to any matters contained in the reports received at this meeting or in any future resolution passed by the council. Do I have a proposer? And a second there? All those in favour? You didn't say anything? No, no, there's, I don't. Okay, so, well, I, I think we've rattled through that one fairly well. Am I at liberty to just change the order of these items around a second? So we have public participation on, on item seventeen. But we also have Nelsie Community and District Transport grants to make a decision on. And we have a representative here from Nelsie and Community District Transport who would like to speak to the meeting. So I think if that's okay, we'll move those ones around so that, um, the members of the public can hear that as well before they get their chance to speak about things. So if you'd like to, um, to come up and switch the microphone on, introduce yourself? That's true, we could do that, couldn't we? Good evening. Good evening. Um, I did have a presentation, but, uh, can't give that. Um. Can I start by saying a little bit about the organisation so that everyone understands? Um, Nelsie and District Community Transport is a not-for-profit organisation. It's primarily run by volunteers. Um, we have uh, nine paid part-time staff and probably around about fifteen, twenty volunteers. And what we do is we provide a door-to-door service for the elderly, disabled and isolated people within the northern half of North Somerset. Yeah. Um. In terms of what we actually do, um, for say shop, a shopping run or something like that, we'll pick someone up outside the door. And that will involve actually walking to the door if they need it, giving them an arm, bringing them back into the bus. We've got special buses with lifts on the back and very gradual steps leading up to it. So, um, we are able to cope very well with the disabled, um, and elderly really. Um. And then we will take them to the shops, get them inside the shops. They'll then be met by store people if they need support when they're in the store. Um, and then they'll come out after the store, we'll take the shopping, put it on to the vehicle, return them home, offload it. Um, if necessary, we'll take the shopping straight in the door and put it on the kitchen table. So it's, um, it's more than I would say public transport. It's actually a support system. And Roger, I think we went through this about two months ago, so you're well accustomed to it. Um, in terms of diner rides, we tend to use volunteers for that. And what we'll do is we'll pick someone up at the home, we'll take them either to doctors, hospitals, GPs. Um, we'll actually get them into the building. And then we'll, if it was something like BRI, we'll go away and park, they'll phone us, we'll then come back down. We'll meet them at the door, pop them in the, the vehicle, take them home, get them back to their home and through the front door. Um, the other thing we do, um, which is quite unusual for community transport. We provide a lot of day trips. Um, we do about a hundred day trips every year. And what we do is we gather all the people up from their home and then we'll take them to places of interest, which might be garden centres. Or it could be a day out into Wells or Sidmouth or somewhere like that. Um, we obviously do this because it's a really good way of getting a soc, almost like a, a small society of people who know each other. And then they can form their own sort of friendship groups within that, which actually enables them to, to get a bit of confidence and protection when they're living in their home on their own. They'll phone up between themselves and say, oh, are you going on this trip, this trip? How are you? And it's a very social environment. So it's very, very good for your, their health and wellbeing. It gets them out of the house, which means they don't become isolated, which is a real problem as we all know. Um. Right, I can sort of wax lyrical. We've actually got, um, three new electric buses. We've actually had deliveries of two of them already. And they're the ones which will be leased from, uh, Nelsie Town Council. Um, we also made an application many, many years ago to the lottery for an electric bus. And we will also be getting that this month. So we will have three electric buses, which we are intending to use primarily for shopping and day trips. So I heard you had a sort of environmental subcommittee. If there's, you know, we will be operating these buses on your roads. So we'll be contributing to Portishead, Nelsie, Clevedon, all being green. So if there is some data that you would like us to provide the council, which, you know, we could actually go and say, we've done X number of trips in Portishead of these sort of miles with zero emissions, then, you know, that is something we're quite willing to, um, provide you with because I think it's, it's a good thing for the whole of society, but in particular, um, we do operate on the high streets, which are usually the congested areas. So watch the space for that. Um, right. So in terms of how we work, um, as I say, we've got sort of drivers, we've got office staff, they deal with all the operations. We've got fourteen members of the committee and Martin, you're one of the committee members and it sounds as though you're elected for next year as well. Um, and all your comments should be fed, sorry, all your comments should be fed through to Martin. So he brings those to the committee. We've actually meet once a month. We've got representatives from Clevedon, Bakwell, Nelsie, uh, Portishead. And we will take all your comments and shape our service if there's stuff that you would like us to do that we're not doing. We do tend to support all of the sort of, uh, clubs and, uh, social events, uh, that we can. Um. So wha- what do we actually do? Um. We actually deliver. By delivering our service, we deliver probably nearly half a million pounds worth of savings to the government, which is through Portishead and the major town councils. Because we're able to, um, keep people in their home for much longer. They can live within their own home without moving. Um, it postpones admittance, admittance to residential care, reduces the, uh, rate of non-elected hospital admissions and reduces the proportion of, um, domicidal and GP visits. So, you know, not only do we good, do we do good for the actual people and we actually support, uh, a hundred and forty now, uh, Portishead members. Um, we have conducted last year about seventeen thousand journeys, for which I think, if I can remember rightly, sorry. Um. Yeah, we've delivered for Portishead seven thousand journeys. So it's, it's a lot of support we do provide to the, the, uh, Portishead Town Council. I can carry on, but I think I've probably given you a fair summary of NDCT. I'm happy to take any questions, really.
Yeah, thank you. That was interesting. The, um, couple of questions. One is in relation to the leasing of the buses that you mentioned. You said Nelsie Town Council have provided two leasing to you.
Yeah.
Did they make the investment, the initial purchase of these two electric buses? And then do you get it as a peppercorn rent or is it sort of a leasing arrangement, which, I mean, clearly a bit confidential probably, but?
Um, I, I, yeah, I, I would. I mean, that's a question for, really for Nelsie. But yes, they did purchase it. And yes, it's a peppercorn rent. They don't want to get anything out of it, except supporting the residents. And they're happy for the buses to be used for all of the runs. So it's for the good of everyone.
Indeed so, yes. And am I right in thinking that, um, to use the service, you've become a member? So your customers pay a fee, an annual fee to which, um, they contribute financially that way?
Yeah. Um, if you, just big ballpark figures, you know, half of our sort of turnover is through grants from the councils and then the rest of it's through fares and membership fees. That's just roughly.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Impressive number of journeys.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's, that's not counting some of the other journeys which we do for hires and things like that. So, you know, we're probably closer to twenty thousand journeys, uh, this year. It's, it's been a busy year, you know. So can I say, Bob, did you want to ask a question? Because you'll need to come up to the, to the mic so that people online can hear. Thank you.
Have, no, North Somerset paid their grant this year?
Um. They have, um, said that they're going to pay about half of what they normally pay for, uh, ground this year. Um, which they haven't actually paid anything as of yet. Um, although they've been nudged many times about, um, coming through with a commitment to support us. We're, we're still in discussions.
Can, can have worms, I think you just opened there, Bob, yes. But even that was the intention. I mean, there are two district councils here. Uh, I think bearing in mind the numbers that you've seen, how they support Portishead, we should actually get them to, uh, cough up in Weston for what, uh, these people are providing.
Yeah, no, and I, I, I fully agree. And we have had this conversation at great length at North Somerset Council. And, um, I believe that, um, that the transports, um, the section are putting together a working party to, to look into this, but there is no easy answer to, to this one unfortunately at the moment.
Um, just say things are working behind the scenes. So there, there, there is support within North Somerset for the continuation of the service. It's just at the moment they're a bit lacking in funds.
Yeah, there might, there might be some disagreements as to how it all moves forward. But I, I know that, um, I know there is a lot of, a lot of support for this service. But, um, equally that is a, a North Somerset issue and, um, and I know pressure is being brought, brought to bear. But there's a lot of people involved in this, this section. So Bob Cartwright, was it next?
Uh, yeah, I, 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 I fully support this, this service. I've been on the bus several times, as you know. Um, I was really concerned with North Somerset's council's contribution. Um, another thing I was just going to ask, uh, with the lottery bus, will that be physically yours? So it's not leased or anything, it will be yours?
Yeah.
So is there any way that you could raise funds by advertising?
We, we already do, Bob.
You do, yeah.
Yeah, we've.
So I'm just wondering if, obviously if there, there's a lot of groups that might want to advertise on the bus. If you own the bus, then there's no problem using the size of the bus to advertise, which can raise revenue?
Yeah, we've got, um. We, we do recognise the pressures that council are under as a whole. And we, I mean, this year we raised over thirty thousand pounds outside of the council to support the service. Um. Little bit of history, North Somerset really hasn't increased their support for over ten years. And if you think over ten years, what inflation has done. Um, I can honestly say probably in the last three or four years, we, we've had huge inflations. So over the last ten years, what they gave us in grants is a pittance, uh, at the moment anyway. So, you know, we, we have a challenge to, um, whi- which we can meet this year um, to keep the service running. And we will be looking at other avenues for revenue. Yes, Bob? So John?
Uh, I just wondered, can you tell us what the last grant that North Somerset paid amounted to?
Uh, right. Sorry. That was a strategic loss of voice there, wasn't it? Um. It's all published. It's, it's in our. Uh, it's in our account. Um, last year they gave us fifty thousand pounds. And the previous year they gave us forty six thousand pounds. Um, but in, when they gave us forty six thousand pounds, we actually got better value for money. Because when they actually asked us to, um, they gave us fifty thousand pounds, they put us, thank you. Sorry, uh, when they gave us fifty thousand pounds, they actually added quite a lot of additional uh, reporting information, which actually cost us eight thousand pounds. So the, the net sum last year was, we were five thousand pounds down before we started. So, um, that is the same sum, uh, that they gave us, as I say, ten odd years ago.
And this is the amount they're proposing to reduce by fifty percent?
Yes, they're, they're thinking of giving us twenty five, twenty seven thousand pounds this year.
Thank you.
Ish, although they haven't said that.
So ju- just for the opportunity for those that are online and also, um, anybody listening to the meeting afterwards. How are it, how are people that just, uh, you know, our general public and, and residents, how are they able to contribute to or donate to you?
Um, we are looking at actually setting, um, uh, a donation group up actually, because, uh, one of the things that is quite obvious to us, there's, you know, you've got your mum, your dad, your uncles and, you know, your grand, your grandparents. And if we don't all support the, the concept, then, you know, too much is reliant on the councils. So, you know, if we had, uh, probably about two years, we'd be able to fill the hole. But North Somerset pulled the plug literally with zero notice on us. Um, so we are going to set up a, a donation page, uh, where people can actually contribute, uh, per month. And I expect to see quite a few sort of donations coming in because people realise that, you know, their, their parents need support and their grandparents need support. It's, it's a service that needs to be there. Otherwise you're going to end up locked up in your own home. Um, and as we all know, when we went through the pandemic, you'll, you'll go batty.
And I hope at that point, when we can get that information, we can publish it via our own social media channels and communication channels as well. Yeah, thank you.
Can I finally say thank you for your support? It's very much appreciated and it means an awful lot, not to just NDCT, but actually your Portishead elderly population, which actually isn't reducing. As we all know, it's actually increasing. Right. Thank you very much for coming along and giving an excellent presentation. Your thanks may have been a little premature because we have to make a decision, don't we? So let's hope that we make the decision that you'd like. So the item, I'd like to apologise to the members of the public, but I thought it was really important that we all got to hear that one first. So the recommendation is to approve the grant awarding Nelsie District's Community Transport £15,000. Do I have a proposal? Is that a proposal, Bob? Okay, and a second? Do you get a second? Yeah. Okay, all those in favour? That is carried. Okay, so thank you very much. That's great. So coming back to the agenda now. I won't move the minutes of the last meeting yet. Because I believe that in the public participation session, somebody wanted to question the minutes of the meeting. So if we do public participation, as we've only got a few people here that want to speak, and then come back to minutes of the last meeting after that, we are slightly pressed for time because we have a confidential item to come in after the public participation. But as I can see hundreds of people in the room, I think we should be okay. So who would like to speak in public participation? Jeff, did you want to go first? Could you come to the mic for me please?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's in two phases. We'll do tonight's first. In future meetings, could the chair and chairman move their desk further back? Because Janet sat there holding a hand a few times and nobody could see her.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, right. WASP, you mentioned it in the minutes. If what I'm led to believe when I was on the committee, we were going to get it built and then you were going to take ownership of the wheels park and responsible for the maintenance, the upkeep. So I think that's what it is. If you're not sure, ask Ben. If not, ask me and I'll find out. I'd like to put on record a special thank you for Ben Aldridge, A, for his time on the council. He's served the council well in many committees and he always put the town first. And if it wasn't for his hard work and obnoxiousness at times, the wheels park would still be a mirage. So I'd like to thank Ben as well as all the other committee members on the WASP committee. I've been down a few times and I've seen it and it's quite a joy to watch grownups and kids mingling without anybody trying to run each over. And the reason why it's called a wheels park is because it's for skateboards, rollerblades, scooters, as well as wheelchair users, which is one of the specific designs for requests we ask for. So if you could refer to it as a wheels park, I think that's great. Going on to the minutes of the last meeting on the 24th of March. I was just flicking through until I saw one or two little subjects. Wyndham Way. Is this another word for the Old Mill Road? If so, have the council jumped into bed with the prospective developers and what are the official plans now? When will the members of the public be invited on to the working party? I don't know how, when or when they started, but it's at least two months old already. Have the council had meetings regarding the pay and display and what are their views? And finally TC 107-03-2024. Contracts of staffing matters. What is the role of a signposting and referred services officer? Never heard of it in all my life. I'm nearly 60. And how many full-time staff do we have now? Thank you.
Clark, do you have any idea what that officer is?
Yeah, the signposting and referral services officer. That is Claire and she does the outreach work on Tuesdays and Fridays at the library, the youth centre and down at the Beacon Hub.
And just to clarify, by signposting, we mean she knows about a lot of different groups and things that are available and she signposts people to those, not that she runs around the town sticking signs on things.
I think Janet can answer that to the mic.
Janet?
On Fridays, Claire is there at the same time as Citizens Advice and people come and ask her for help. People like, who have thought about committing suicide, they come in, they're very distressed. They sit down with Claire, she points them in the right direction to get some help. And very often points rings up to help them and rings up the right group of people that can help them. She gets people who've had issues with domestic abuse. She has people who have debt problems, housing problems, all the really difficult problems. And the first thing she ever asks them is, do you have enough to eat? And the number of food bank vouchers she has to give out every week is quite amazing. And when people come, they're almost all really depressed or upset. Most of them are in tears. And sometimes she has to talk them down for about an hour before they're able to go out and live their lives again. And if there's something she can't help them with, Citizens Advice are there and she makes an appointment with Citizens Advice. Last week she had 14 people come to see her in distress. They all went away with an answer of somewhere they could go for help.
That is a very good service. I would suggest maybe you trans, sorry, amending signposting to community and referral rather than signposting. It's more personalised.
Sorry, Jeff, I think the reason that they use that term is because it's the term that's used in all the voluntary organisations. They all signpost to one another and they all call it signposting. So if you go into a voluntary organisation, they will either help you or they will signpost you to another. So it's one of those terms that's used across that sector, which is why it's used by the council here. So it would put us out of sync with everybody else to do that.
Okay, and the other questions?
So the mention of the Wyndham Way development area is the Old Mill Road site up to, pretty much up to Dano Gate, isn't it? Back to Sainsbury's. So that entire area there, that was in the North Somerset councillors' report. And that was just for notification that that was still ongoing and being looked at. And it is still ongoing and being looked at.
Still 400 developments?
Houses. There is, I believe at the last meeting we had, there was somewhere between 300 to 500 being the possibles and around about 800 new jobs.
But I would disagree with that wholly. I would disagree with that wholly. Basically, the Old Mill Road is the council who are rolling around thinking of the sale money at the cost of professional jobs at the overdevelopment of this town with no real infrastructure in place for it to cope. The more developments you put down this neck of the woods will then force North Somerset then to extend the size of Highdown School. So people are going from up downhill to the top of the hill in due course, which is what the previous Conservative government tried to do previously and kept it very quiet because they knew there'd be more demonstrations which you're likely to get. And I don't understand why you've changed it from Old Mill Road to Wyndham Way. It's just, it sounds like a backhanded move to get everybody off the cases.
I think it's been the Wyndham Way development area for a long time. There was, the initial proposals I think came up for the redevelopment just of Old Mill Road. In the last meeting I had this afternoon on this one, they told us that it's very unlikely that anything's going to happen in the short term, certainly in the next five years. Because it turns out that at the moment, commercial rent is much better than redevelopment prices. So it looks like five to 10 years before anything starts in the Old Mill Road area.
The original scheme kicked off because Mr Hazley at the time decided to write down to the people that owned all the properties. But what you might not be aware of is the original plan was two phases. Phase one, Old Mill Road. Phase two, Homebase and the fitness centre next to it. Because apparently, I don't know if it's true, but at the time, and I'm talking 2015, 16, 17, the lease on those properties expired in 2025.
Yeah, so as I say, I had a meeting today, there's nothing likely to come forward at the moment. This is an overarching plan to defend the green belt around Portishead. Because if you've got no brownfield sites to offer up, then the developers will apply for green belts, will turn them down obviously because it's green belt. They'll appeal to the planning inspector who will then say, well, you haven't brought all the brownfield sites. So there are many reasons for this. There is nothing underhanded, but equally it's not a town council issue. So what, could we move on to your next one, which was when?
Working party and pay and display.
So public participation, working party, I'm assuming that you were referring to that one, is it? Or is it just any working?
In the minutes, it's, there was a question about working party, about the public to be invited on to the working party committee.
So Emma, did you want to pick that one up?
Yeah, I can do. So yeah, that's with me at the moment, Jeff. And we literally just waited for prioritisation in terms of communication. So as soon as we're in the phase now where we've gone through, we've got a framework of that engagement, what it looks like, we've got our communications officer up to speed. We've got a council document to support the strategy. And then all of that is sort of work in progress documentation in effect, which we're going to bring to forums with residents in that sense to home what that looks like going forward. Just to make sure that we've got all of our channels, all of our sort of engagement and touchpoints with the members of the public, ready for rolling forward for, you know, any, like the Wyndham Way development, like the parking, you know, making sure that we've got all of our touchpoints ready to roll, you know, for when we need to be speaking to members of the public to pass information on. But at the same time, making sure we've always got a channel for the people to come in and give their points of view that we can actually take on board.
Okay, and I believe your last point was regard with.
Do all the councillors agree with the pay and display that North Somerset will enforce on us?
Okay, so we've filled out our consultation, I believe, have we as a council? Does anybody wish to speak to what we put in our consultation responses?
I'm happy to. We spoke to many residents, to shopkeepers on the high street. People approached us while we were doing the surveying down at the lake grounds. The overwhelming majority of people we spoke to were against parking charges. And we put in a very strong response to the town council and a number of all councillors would have done that too. So the consensus on the town councils, we oppose the parking charges and consensus plans.
Good to hear. Just one quick one, Roger, sorry. Can you consult with your other North Somerset councillors on Portishead? And tend to come down to these meetings because I think it's beneficial for them. Because they'll be then aware of what's going on in Portishead rather than sitting in the ivory tower in Weston. Thank you. Here end of the lesson.
So all our executive members? Yeah, I mean. Oh, yeah, well, we do have, all the, sorry, you meant all the, all the Portishead North Somerset councillors, yes. We do have Sue Mason here, don't we? Tim, myself, we are missing a few. I know I've extended an invitation to all of them to come along to next week's Portishead Residents' Annual Meeting. Hopefully they'll be along there to have, to say their piece. And I will continue to extend an invitation to them to all of these meetings.
Can I also just add? I'll just also add that to the last one, so councillor Pete Burden, I asked him to come to attend these meetings and we try.
He's agreed to come to the next week's meeting.
Oh, good, good. Can I also put it on record that we'd like to perhaps express our thanks to David for all the work you put on the transport, sorry, the parking charges and doing the submission. Thank you, David.
Chris, please do.
Thank you, Chris Clark. I've been to one previous meeting, so I apologise if something I say has been touched on before. Firstly, something I said on social media to Roger is that at next week's meeting, would it be possible for people to wear name tabs, clearly showing who they are? The suggestion that a lanyard down there just doesn't work. Can you imagine if a lady's got a lanyard there and you're seen to be looking straight down?
Sorry, Chris, are we talking about the?
They said there's an open, there's a meeting next week in which the town representation.
So the Portishead Residents' Annual Meeting next week?
And any future meeting?
We have, we do have these.
Yeah, but people can't, oh, just on your lapel or wherever. So when you're circulating, people know who the councillors are and who they're talking to. Because it's important. I mean, I've come along today and studied names on plaques because I've never seen most of the people before. And I'm quite a chatty outgoing person, but at the whatever meeting was recently, I didn't know anybody. I knew the few people that I see around town, but I didn't have a clue who the councillors were. Then you said afterwards, ah, well, we were wearing lanyards. But the lanyards are passes to get inside buildings. They're not something to show who the people are. And it's very little effort, but huge reward. And I'll speak, as I say, I've come from a corporate arena and we would never think of putting an event on without the people wearing name tabs.
So I reckon we could probably get some sticky labels?
That's all it needs.
And then stick them on our lapels? We'll have a look and see how that goes.
It's a small thing, but it makes a difference.
Sorry, could I just interrupt for a second? Alan, did you want to say something on that?
Actually, so just looks on the back of here and there's an opening on there. And you could just put a paper clip in there and even click to there on your lapel, bring like that, that would do it. That'd be no costly bolt to it.
It's a really, really small thing, but it makes a huge difference. And the other thing I wanted to query if I may, the gentleman who sat there just made a presentation. He was obviously expecting to make a different presentation because he had a display to go up. And I wasn't aware whether he knew what he was doing here tonight. Because it seems strange that he, basically an emotional decision was made. I'm not saying it was the wrong decision, but you guys just made an emotional decision to back him with 15 grand. Now, North Somerset Executive or whoever had cut back by, they made a business decision. They knew what their budget was. They know we're in hard times and they cut back. But when he sat there today, you kind of set yourselves up for this. Because this gentleman was here, you would have felt awkward not granting him the funds that he came. It would have been unpleasant. And I just felt it kind of strange that you allowed that to happen. Surely he should have come along at a different time, explained what he did and why he would be asking for future funding. So that when the vote took place, you could make a proper decision rather than an emotional one. And I apologise if people think differently, but that was my perception of what just happened. And I apologise if people think differently, but that was my perception of what just happened.
Sorry, Chris, let me, I know Emma wants to come in and explain this to you, but let me just pick up on the fact that, um, that you say we made an emotional, emotional decision on that one. These decisions are all discussed at great length before we come to this meeting. So I would, I would say that we made a business decision to support a very valuable community service that we have, but Emma can probably expand on that.
Sorry, Chris. Um, so we initially intended for Cameron to visit us at the Community Matters meeting last month, unfortunately, due to personal reasons, he wasn't able to attend. So we did actually review the information in terms of the grant award at that, at that point. Um, in essence of the numbers, going back to the commerciality, in essence, we, we we're making a contribution of two pounds per resident for the times with the seven thousand or just over seven thousand journeys that they're doing within Portishead. So the commerciality was, was discussed within the, um, sort of, within the grants um, and working party conversations that we did have. Um, yes, Cameron did have a presentation, um, that he could have made this evening, but unfortunately we weren't able to put it on the screen. But, um, yeah, all of that does go on before this meeting. Um, but yeah, I understand how it could.
Do you mind if I ask you that? Is that true of all the agenda items? Because once again, you've been talking about spending money, but there's been no talk of budgetary constraints or so obviously I assume that budgets and however much has been allocated in the past has been discussed for tonight's meeting.
Yeah, sorry, John, if you want to.
I would like to assure you that the amounts involved were included in our budgets and they are affordable.
Okay, that's all I wanted to ask. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chris. Um, Bob Ball.
See me, Matt, this is?
Oh, it's you, is it, Bob? Sorry, John, did you want to?
Just, just to say something for Chris. I'm sure that, um, you would be able to see the accounts to make sure that they are um, as you would hope them to be.
I've got, no, you're gonna have to do microphones to do that for the people online. Yeah, sorry.
Okay, got three items. First one, to not embarrass you, but I'd just like to thank you for taking on the role of chair and vice chair in a very difficult situation. Uh, I find it quite ironic that the people who complained that we didn't have a voice on the executive North Somerset then complained when we did. And I'll leave you all to think about that. That's exactly what happened at the last meeting. Ridiculous. One minor observation on the teams that are in all the committees, and I only know this because being there and done that. The chair and vice chair are supposed to go to all the finance meetings as well. And it does say that, and as long as you know, that's fine.
Yeah, they're ex officio members.
Yeah, it's intended that they, I didn't know that that came in discussions in the meetings. The last item comes back to parking. The consultation that came out from, uh, North Somerset was how would you like your throat cut for Christmas? Would you like it cut with a knife or just break your neck? Um, that isn't what the public said. I don't believe the public said, we do not want to have uh, parking charges in Portishead. Nelsons have formally informed rather than through the consultancy, uh, North Somerset, I believe, that they do not wish to have any charges in place in Nelsons. They've come up with the same arguments as the people did. I think you came in late at the meeting, but you've probably seen the notes. The people that came to the meeting here all said the same thing. And then there are a number of issues, obviously. David wants to be able to still get into his drive, so he don't want to be parked outside all the time, which is what would happen as soon as you charge for the other areas. The high street shops will lose even more. You know, we all know why it's not a good idea, as I know you now. But I would like to have seen this council put in a formal statement to Weston or to North Somerset, rather, to say that they don't agree with parking, which is what Nelsons have done, rather than, I know Dave's done a great job on the consultancy, we've all thought about the consultancy, but it assumes that they're going to do it. I don't assume that they're going to do it. I will act as far as I can to stop them doing it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry, David, did you want to say something about the, um, a statement that went to North Somerset?
I mean, thanks, thanks, Paul. We, in the opening paragraph, I think of our response, or possibly the second one, we said we strongly object to paying uh, to this, to the process of the consultation and to having, you know, Portishead Residents have to pay car parking charges. But we did also consider sending a second or a separate letter to them. Uh, and I think our decision was that we'd hold that off to the next day, you know, if there is a next stage. Hopefully it will be, um, turned down by the executive. I think the strength of feeling is immense around the patch. But we've kind of got a list of additional things we'll put into a far better to them. Oh, that's okay.
Number was on the objections on the four thousand two hundred, was that mentioned?
Sorry, Tim, use your mic, please, for the people online, otherwise they can't hear.
Yeah, so we've got four thousand two hundred, uh, petition back objections, yeah.
Was that on the information you had?
And that's by the time we submitted town council response, uh, I think, and that was the week before the consultation closed. I think the number was just about three thousand. By the time I submitted my ward council response, I think it was about three thousand seven hundred. Um, so no, we didn't specify that final figure because I think we can just get our things in on.
I guess it's just worth noting in the minute so that we've got it for later in the year if we do want to send a formal letter.
Yeah.
That's the right.
Yes. Just wondered how many people were of the voting age for the consultation to be able to say, yeah, we're drivers, we live in the town and we object to it. Because we've got a population appreciate of nearly twenty eight thousand. That seems an awfully low number for people who haven't filled in the consultation, doesn't it? I don't want us being blamed if it goes ahead, that we've actually made the effort to do this. Because I think most of us are in agreement, we don't want it. But surely Portishead should vote with their feet as well and make more of an effort, I think, as a town to say, we really don't want this. Because otherwise, four thousand would be a drop in the ocean and North Somerset, I suspect, you know best, Roger. But they'll say, well, not many people objected per, per ratio of persons in the town.
I guess, sorry, if I could just put that, try and put that in a little bit of perspective for you. I believe that on the entire consultation across the whole of North Somerset for parking, there was four thousand five hundred responses on the consultation. Um, and around about eight and a half thousand on the waste consultation, which is by far, and I really do mean by far, the most consultation responses that North Somerset have ever received. But it does, um, it does stand mentioning, and I've been with most of the executives today and it's been mentioned that Portishead by themselves managed to put four thousand five hundred signatures on a petition against it. And I believe that Nelsons and Clevedon have probably done something very similar as well. So honestly, the message has already landed down at North Somerset. Now we just need to, um, to progress through the process on that one. So I did.
Um, I think that what we must be very aware of was that because it was online and a majority of the responses were online, um, there are many people in this town that don't use online and didn't know about the consultation at all. For example, somebody I spoke to knocked on the window of thirty cars that were parked at the Esplanade with older people sitting in there enjoying the view. And none of those people had heard about the consultation at all.
I was going to say just what Janet said. I think the real problem with the consultation was the way people were consulted. Um, it was by largely electronic means. We did as a council what we could by leafersing the roads close to the High Street and around Lake Grounds to set people who who weren't on Facebook or, you know, didn't get any email from the council were aware of it, that we could only cover a fraction of the whole population. So I think that figure probably speaks a big part to, um, the problem with the consultation. Uh, I was going to say something else, but I've come to the wall, so.
Okay, thank you. Sue Mason, I believe.
You believe correctly. Uh, just to say that paper copies of both consultations are actually in the library. And I know that that was mentioned quite widely as well. Um, but I think whatever sort of consultation or anything that we do, um, there is bound, you know, there are bound to be people who just didn't see, didn't know and whatever. And I think it's also true that because we do not have a weekly local paper that is delivered to our doors, that we do not know all that's going on, you know, that we used to know about. And this, I think, is a very classic example of that. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue, Tim.
Yeah, just look on the North Somerset Facebook page. Uh, they've got the, the consultation is now closed, obviously, from twelve o'clock today. But they've got nine thousand responses over the proposed Black Bin consultation. Sadly, only five thousand five hundred for the parking consultation. Even though we've had four thousand two hundred people on petitions.
Sorry, Tim, it seems my figures rate of date on that one. I got, I received mine a few days ago. Okay, sorry.
Just to clarify that, what I was alluding to was the fact that I thought that perhaps a little bit of apathy has crept in. Because if you look at a lot of the comments on social media, it's a done deal is what people are inferring. They're saying, what's the point of voting? North Somerset Council are going to put it through despite what we object to. And they cite Clevedon Seaford for a start off as a stick to beat the council with. And that was my concern, that apathy might have ruled here and the true response to the time won't come out.
Yeah, you're right. Clevedon Seaford is the gift that keeps on giving. Um, although I'd say that the, I think the message has definitely landed at North Somerset. Can I just ask, is there anybody online who would like to say anything as time is marching and we still have some confidential items to deal with? Please put your hands up now if you'd like to say anything.
I'd just like to make one quick comment if I could, please, Roger.
Paul Mottby, yeah.
I'd just like to say that, you know, I would have liked to have attended the meeting in person tonight, as I have done for the past eighteen or so years. But sadly, I didn't feel safe in attending. Anyone who attends meetings at Portishead Town Council and doesn't fully agree with the views of the council ends up getting bullied, harassed and belittled, both online and also during the meetings. I've even been abused by one councillor before I was even able to attend and enter the meeting. It's a sad position that this has arisen and that members of the public feel afraid to attend in person.
Okay, I'm very sorry that you feel that way, Paul. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment? No, and anybody in the room who would like to say anything further? Mr. Bob Ball.
Um, yeah, I'm sorry about that, Paul, because I have no problem in walking into this council at any time, past or present or future, and arguing with them completely. Um, you might, if you were listening all the way through, you'd probably found that I took a slightly different route on the parking situation. I would also possibly take a route on any money that's wasted on climate change and other green items. So I have no fear of coming in here. I didn't have any fear coming in here with the Conservatives previously. I certainly didn't have any fear sat the other side of the table. And I'm not sure where this fear comes from. There's a nastiness that actually exists online, but that is not something that happens in this council meeting.
Well, the only thing I will say to that, Bob, is perhaps you haven't been abused by a councillor before you enter the meeting.
Okay, I think, I think we've probably gone far enough on this one now, Paul. Thank you very much. Um, anybody else have anything to say or shall we move on to the minutes of the last meeting? Okay, so we are to consider and approve the minutes of the last meeting. Um, item eighteen, eighteen point one, full council meeting held on thirteenth of March, twenty twenty four. And extraordinary full council meeting on the twenty third of April, twenty twenty four. The only item that I can see on here that possibly needs amendment is Rayna Knight's name was spelt wrong. Um, I think she would appreciate it if we correct the spelling of her name unless I got that wrong. But I think it's, I think it's a slight misspell on that one. Um, the recommendation therefore is that the council approve the minutes of the full council meeting held on the thirteenth of March, twenty twenty four and the extraordinary full council meeting on the twenty third of April, twenty twenty four as a true and accurate record. Do I have a proposer for that?
Sorry, Roger, as myself and Jenny weren't at the meeting, the extraordinary general meeting, do we need to?
So shall I move, shall I move them separately?
Yeah.
So shall we move approval of minutes of the full council meeting held on the thirteenth of March, twenty twenty four with a proposer? And a seconder? I've got my glasses on, so someone will have to do that one. All in favour? And then. Okay, so you've abstained, yeah. Okay, don't forget to use your mic, please. Okay. And then we will move, um, recommendation of the minutes of the extraordinary full council meeting on the twenty third of April, twenty twenty four as a true and accurate record. Could I have a proposer? And a seconder? And all those in favour? Item nineteen, we took earlier. Um, the date of the next town council meeting is Wednesday, the nineteenth of June, twenty twenty four. There is, um, uh, no, no, just get your teeth back in, Roger. There is a Portishead Residents' Annual Meeting next week on the fifteenth at seven thirty back here for all of the residents who want to to turn up. Um, there are one hundred seats available, I think, or one hundred people allowed in this hall at once. So it's quite rare for us to have that many people. But if you want to ensure that you've got a seat, please email the clerk and request one. And therefore we then have to um, exclude the public and press because we're going to speak about confidential items. Um, under the Public Bodies Admissions to Meetings Act nineteen sixty, members of the public and press are required to leave the meeting at items twenty two and twenty three due to the items being confidential matters, contractual staffing costs, confidential staffing matters and contractual obligations. The recommendation that members agree and exclude the public and press. Do I need a proposer? Could I have a proposer? Could I have a seconder? Could I have all those in favour? Thank you, that's carried. Can we, the room's empty, can we make sure that we've switched off the on people online? Thank you very much for the.